Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Hill.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I don't think I see any elected officials. But welcome to board members and staff and others in attendance and those who are watching online. Once again, we appreciate your patience and cooperation as we follow social distancing guidelines so that our June meetings may be held in person. So it's nice to see those of you who are here. Also, we would like to welcome our 2020-2021 student representative, Ms. Abigail Lee, who is seated beside Noah Kelly. We are so glad that you could join us tonight to become acclimated to these processes, and we look forward to sharing more information about Abigail at our July meeting. As Ms. Bab shared last week, I have scheduled a called meeting on Friday, June 19th, for consideration of the superintendent's annual evaluation. The meeting will be held in this boardroom at 10:30 a.m., and an agenda with supporting documentation will be published in the next few days. And at this point, I'm going to call on Mr. Thomas to give us an update on the reopening task force and just kind of a briefing on that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate an opportunity just to talk for just a few minutes and more or less off the cuff about this. But, you know, we value everyone's opinion in terms of this reopening. I guess our main goal, you know, we want to be, first of all, we want to be in school on August 10. We want our students in school, and we want to do that in a safe manner so we consider the safety of our students, the safety of our staff. And in order to gather the input from all of our stakeholders, and I'll define stakeholders here in just a minute. First of all, we asked the Board of Education to, we wanted to establish a task force, and we asked each board member to submit a name of someone in their community that could serve on this task force, and each board member did that. And for that, I am very appreciative that you submitted a name to us. And the task force is one layer. There's multiple layers to this process. So the task force, there'll be public meetings because they will be presenting, not recommendations, presenting the results of the survey information. We wanted to have a group to help us plan to, in a way, to look at that objectively and to be transparent about it. So the best way to do that, we thought, was again to have a community involvement, and that's what the task force is all about. That's not to say that the input from everybody else is any less important, because it's not. As a matter of fact, we've got four focus groups. Focus groups are made up of teachers, students, parents, and administrators. Those focus groups will be doing, if you will, a deeper dive into the survey questions and the responses that we've gotten. And what I mean by deeper dive, okay, we know how you answered this question, but what was behind your answer for this question? So that we can gather all the information to basically make the best decision, again, for our students and our staff. So the focus groups, where did the teachers come from? Those teachers are representatives of our Teacher Advisory Council. What is the Teacher Advisory Council? That is a group that this board established there. It's made up of teachers, obviously. The teachers pick the teachers that are on that council. So that's not something I pick. Again, the teachers do that process. And we meet all throughout the year, several meetings, well, once a month, for maybe seven, eight months during the year. So we have teachers from that group that will be part of the focus group. Also, our KAC, I mean KCEA, our Knox County Educator Association. They're members from the Knox County Educators Association on that group. So they represent the membership of our teachers. And again, the students, we have a Student Advisory Council. The students were chosen based on their participation in Student Advisory Council. We have a Family Advisory Council that helped with the selection with family members. So I just want to say that the job that those focus groups will do for us is invaluable because how else are we going to make the decisions if we don't hear from you what your thinking is and why you're thinking that way? So I know there's been some miscommunication about maybe not having an educator on the task force. Again, we asked board members for representative. We could have gotten an educator, but again, we were looking for community members because the educator voice is the teacher focus group. We already were going to have that. So again, just looking at that community support, as far as a health educator, we're in daily communications with the Health Department. So we do rely on the information that's provided, and again, there are another layer. So focus group's a layer, task force is a layer, Health Department's a layer, the State Department of Education, and what the governor says is a layer. So there are multiple layers to this. And again, the decision ultimately, or recommendation ultimately, resides with the superintendent making a recommendation to the board as to, hey, here's what we're going to do based on all this feedback that we've gathered. So I think we've worked, we've tried to work really hard involving as many people across this community as we possibly can. We've had 22,000 responses to the survey. I think 71,000 and something invitations to families and stakeholders were sent out. It's on our website. It's open until June the 19th. So if you're not within that 22,000, what I would encourage you to do tonight, tomorrow, the next day, or anytime before June 19th, is to fill out one of those surveys for us so we can get your input. So, and I think our research department thought maybe we'd get 6,000 or 7,000 responses, but 22,000, so pretty remarkable in terms of the number of people that responded. And all this information will be used by us to help make the best recommendation that we can to our board, and again, with the safety of our students and our staff being the main focus, and then the next focus is, you know, get our students in school. And so we're trying our best to do that. So I just wanted to take a minute and let everybody know that, hey, no group is more important than the other group. If you're serving on a focus group, task force, whatever capacity you're serving in, maybe you're not serving on any, well, get the survey in. So again, hope that helps to clear up some of the miscommunication, if that's what it was, or misunderstanding, because that was certainly not the intent on our part. We were trying to do the best we can to gather everyone's input. So I don't know if there are questions about that, Madam Chair, or board members, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
I just would like to add that you were very clear, Bob, in your press release and in your notification you sent to staff and faculty that there were several groups involved. Right up front, you did say that.
Yeah, great, great point. There was a press release that went out. You know, sometimes people see what they want to see and maybe hear what they want to hear. So, and I understand that, I'm same way. But we did identify all the groups, I think, in the press release. I know I had a couple of few interviews last week. I think I even talked about it in the interview. I know last week's superintendent report, once again, talked about that and who all was going to be involved in this. So I appreciate you letting me say a word or two about that, and thank you, Ms. Hill.
Ms. Christie.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to the people that volunteered to be on the task force because I think they have come under some unfair criticism, which is unfortunate because we reached out to them.
Right. Yes, I agree, Ms. Christie. I didn't realize I was doing that to my friends and associates when I recommended them. Bless their hearts for being willing to be involved in the process, but kudos to them for doing that. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for that update and that clear explanation. I hope now people can kind of rest knowing that all these voices will come together to make a decision, and the superintendent will make those decisions based on the information. Any other questions? Okay. Board members, you received information via email yesterday regarding the withdrawal of Item 6C1 and the addition of Item 10D regarding a payment agreement with Dell Financial Services for the purchase of Chromebooks for a one-to-one initiative. Also, at the request of a board member, you have a copy of a district Chromebook report at your place at the table. Any questions or discussion on this item will be entertained upon reading that item. So if you'll hold those questions. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I apologize, ma'am. I just might like to add a discussion and possible action at the end of this agenda in regard to the additional funding that we have discovered we are not getting through the BEP and this decision that's been made by, proposed by our governor, not yet voted on by our lawmakers, and just see if anyone has any ideas about something we can do to possibly help them realize that, yet again, another hit that we are going to struggle to try to fill. Thank you.
Do we have a second on that addition? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hill and a second by Ms. Bab to add an agenda item at the, we'll add that at the end of our, after we approve everything else that is on the agenda. All in favor of that addition? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. All right. Okay, and so we had, we need a second, right? We have a motion by Mr. Norman to approve this agenda. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. This evening, the board and Superintendent Thomas want to take this opportunity to recognize a very deserving student. Not disturbing, deserving. I'll try to get through this, Noah, without any mess-ups. Noah Kelly was selected through a very rigorous application and interview process during the spring of 2019 as our Board of Education Student Representative for the 2019-2020 school year. Noah graduated just a couple of days ago as valedictorian of Karnes High School, with a wonderful speech, I might add, that I've heard, I heard about. He had a 4.58 GPA. To highlight just a few of his other accomplishments during Noah's time at Karnes, he was a member of the National Honor Society Student Government and the Technology Student Association, where he served as state president during his junior year. He also served on our district Student Advisory Council, and through that role, was able to travel to Nashville and participate in the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation Pathways Conference, where he had the opportunity to talk about educational disparities and post-secondary opportunities. Of course, he is not all about academics, and anyone who knows him, who is familiar with Noah, knows how musical he is. And it's no surprise that he was also the drum major of the Karnes High School marching band during his senior year. Noah's future plans include going to Vanderbilt University and becoming a pediatrician, which is so very impressive. But I believe even more impressive and most notable, and his most notable accomplishment is his service as an unwavering leader, not only to students, but to the entire district during this unprecedented time. No other student class during my lifetime has dealt with a global state of emergency and a pandemic. So on behalf of the board and Knox County Schools, I want to thank Noah for his service to our entire community. His student leadership has been invaluable to us over the last few months. Every year, we say how hard it is to say goodbye to a student representative, and I think that everybody sitting around this table would agree that it's certainly difficult this year, and Noah, you will hold a special place in our hearts. And we congratulate you, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Please don't be a stranger. We appreciate your time as student representative on our board. And we, the superintendent and I, have something to present to you, and then we'll take a picture. Okay, Ms. Courtney, if you'll read the agenda items, please.
Yes. Item 6, consent agenda.
We have a motion by Ms. Hill, a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, approve suspension of procedures for collecting debt within Knox County Board of Education Policy E191, school nutrition charges for the remainder of fiscal year 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approve award of Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $878,770.68.
So we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approve memorandum of understanding with the State of Tennessee Department of Education for the Coordinated School Health Project for fiscal year 2021, and a warrant of grant funds in the amount of $185,000, with required matching funds in the amount of $15,000.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Christie. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approve receipt of federal IDEA partnership grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education in the amount of $5,510 designated to address technology needs that have been identified as a result of COVID-19 school closures to better support the educational needs of students with disabilities.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve receipt of UCOR education mini-grants in the amount of $500 each for Bearden High, Farragut High, and Hardin Valley Middle Schools designated for STEM projects as outlined in proposals.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Bab. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approve receipt of East Tennessee Foundation Neighbor-to-Neighbor Disaster Relief Fund Grant in the amount of $5,000 designated to support the work of the School Nutrition Department's Feeding Our Children program.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Christie. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approve receipt of East Tennessee Foundation JLC Family Donor Advised Fund Grant in the amount of $5,000 for Fulton High designated to support senior prom and graduation expenses.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen and a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion. Ms. Owen?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to point out that this grant is for multiple years, and so it does not apply to a prom this year. There were some questions about that. So it will support graduation this year and then graduation in proms in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8G, approve receipt of Dollar General Literacy Foundation Summer Reading Program Grant in the amount of $3,000 for South Knoxville Elementary School designated to support the school's Readers Our Leaders project.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Satterfield and a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approve contracts with Dixie Roofing Incorporated, Escola LLC, and Henley Roofing Company for provision of roofing services up to $1 million for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Christie. Discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is that one of those things that automatically renews if both sides agree? Or does it have to come back to the board each year for hours?
Mr. Oaks, would you like to fill that question, please?
Yes, sir. This would not generally have to come back to the board. We'd be notified. It's a term contract for a roof repair.
Both sides agree.
If the companies agree and we agree. Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approve Knox County Schools' adoption of textbooks for American Sign Language, English Language Arts, and Career and Technical Education, Criminal Justice, Culinary Arts, and Hospitality and Tourism.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion.
I do have a question. Was this already included in our textbook budget?
Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is just an adoption. This is not a purchase. So this is not in the current budget.
So we're going to be teaching these classes without textbooks?
We will be using the current textbook resources that we have.
All right. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, approve purchase and sell agreement with Lily and Jay Redman for property located at Coward Mill Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37931, at a total cost of $2,350,000 using fiscal year 2020 capital plan funds.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Hill. Discussion. Ms. Bab?
Yes, could Mr. Oaks just come up and talk to us about what's gone on about looking at this property?
Mr. Oaks?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, can you restate the question I didn't hear?
Yeah, could you just explain to us about what's been going on about looking at it and looking at traffic issues and things like that in regard to this property?
Yes, ma'am. We brought this piece of property to the board last month, and there was some concern about the county, about the added traffic to Coward Mill Road. And they wanted to do a traffic study, and they've completed that study. And Mr. Snowden from County Engineering is here if you have any specific questions for him. But basically, what he reported back to us is the study said the traffic on Coward Mill would be significantly increased and that they had some safety concerns. And we met with Mr. Snowden and representatives from the mayor's office yesterday afternoon, the superintendent, and our finance office, and discussed what those were. And we have, we will propose or are proposing that we share the cost of the needed improvements with the county. The improvements are estimated to be in the neighborhood of $4 million. So the county would pick up two of that, and we would add $2 million to this project. So instead of a $22 million project over three years, it would ultimately be a $24 million project over three years. And I understand that right now, the improvements that are being discussed by the county engineer, and of course, Mr. Snowden can talk to this much better than I can, but is a widening of the road surface and potentially adding sidewalks to one side of the of the road surface and potentially adding sidewalks to one side of the road and a replacement or an addition, additional bridge on the road that would allow bypass for the existing one-lane bridge that's at the far east end of Coward Mill Road.
And does, I've been out there in the business park that's there. Is that road going to be connected to Coward Mill?
Charahalla, I understand the extension from where it currently terminates to Coward Mill has been approved and funded and is expected to start construction.
Yes, ma'am. Jim Snowden, 205 West Baxter Avenue. Yeah, that, that project, as Russ was saying, is funded and it is slated to start construction later this fall. So it should be complete. Charahalla's extension to Coward Mill, much before the school is completed in 2022.
Yes, ma'am. Any, any other questions?
No, I mean, you know, I had gone out there and I mean, I had, I had received several people contacting me and I understand their concerns after I drove out there and stuff like that. So I appreciate looking at it. I mean, I think this just brings up a lot of concerns I keep having just about, it's not even schools, but about our county planning. And we keep putting neighborhoods more and more in places and then what happens is the schools are not thought about on the forefront and it's after the fact, we have got to put schools in to support the growth in these areas. And then there's impacts on the roads and everything else. And, you know, it just, it concerns me just the whole planning of our county on some of this. I mean, the way it happens and, you know, once again, this is not just individually with this project, but I think this project, you know, brings up some of just the overall growth issues that our county faces. So I just kind of wanted to say that.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Besides the traffic issue, we also had some communication from residents who were concerned about the appropriateness of the area for a school. They are concerned about potential sinkholes in the area. Have we looked at that?
We have done our due diligence on geotechnical engineering and they have looked closely at that site and they haven't found any reason that would, you know, cause that site to be problematic as far as our construction project would be concerned.
And I would support, since it is so close to residential areas, I think it'd be great if we're able to add the sidewalks as part of the road improvements.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten C, approve utilization of general purpose fund balance in the event that sales tax revenue is insufficient to meet existing expenditure obligations through June 30, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Hill. Discussion. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this, I guess, Mr. McPherson would be the proper person to answer it. Is there a cap on this or is it just a blank check basis?
Well, yeah, well, let me characterize it this way. We, we don't feel this would put us in a perilous position necessarily. It's just that this would allow us to go into that 3%. Now, that 3% is about $15 million. So what we're actually asking is that so we're not running back and forth to the board and so we can do this on a timely basis. If we should go below that $15 million mark, do we have permission from the board to actually use dollars from the rainy day fund? You know, a bit of good news, but I'm going to say this very cautiously. Preliminary indications from the state is that April was significantly better than what everyone had anticipated, or most everyone. We have budgeted to replenish fund balance to what we had possibly around $4 million if we go into, into the, into the 3%. So if this trend continues, again, this is very preliminary, we don't even know what it means to us. We're looking at it on a statewide level, so we're having to kind of do some back-of-the-envelope calculations. But it looks like that sales tax came in at about 87% in April of the prior year. We were receiving information from a host of sources that it could be around 50 to 60%. So March was also a little better. So we're very hopeful, but I want to be cautious in delivering the message, we're very hopeful that the degree that we might have to go into fund balance will not be as significant as, as what we're projecting. We're keeping our fingers crossed.
Okay. Would it be, based on what you know and highly suspect should happen based on things you're seeing, would it be reasonable to think that, for the, for the public, to think that it would go, worst-case scenario, no more than $5 million?
We had originally estimated that it could go as deep as, as 8 million. However, we do have some, some safeguards in place because we are submitting an application and preliminary indications that it would be acceptable to help us fund some initiatives that, that we incurred in FY '20 using CARES dollars. And if you'll remember, what we're, what we're suggesting is that dollars over and above the $7 million with respect to the Chromebooks, we can apply that to FY '20 initiatives. So that would help even more. While it's not money used, we're not actually requesting dollars to stick in the bank to replenish fund balance, because I think there's a little bit of confusion on that. What we're asking for is to, for some dollars that we can apply for expenditures that we incurred in FY '20. So that being the case, that would essentially replenish the dollars back into, back into the bank. So in, on the back end, that would help our fund balance position. I would say that what we had estimated is four to eight million. I do not believe in any way that it would go any more than eight million. And for, at this point, I, I am very, I'm cautiously optimistic that it would definitely not even be more than four.
Well, what, what would it do procedurally if we basically kept it right now at five and then, I mean, what I'm getting at is that doesn't mean that if, if we get into a real bad situation, you couldn't come back and get two or three more. Would that, is that going to put you in a bind?
It, it, I don't believe it would put us in a bind from a cash perspective. I think where it could get tricky is, is, sales tax information is not in real time. So there's a two-month lag. And so potentially what could happen is we would, we would be into the fund balance on the books at a certain amount and I wouldn't want to violate that $5 million mark because we, we really won't know the true impact that COVID has had on this fiscal year until about August. And, and the reason for that is April, May, and June comes in, in June, July, and August, as far as, as far as the information. But I, you know, I would say this, we will definitely keep the board informed of how it's trending and what we will do is we can, we can then inform the board of, hey, we think we're safe still and this is a safe estimate. So I think worse, what we could do is if we see something really trending in a negative direction, I'm hopeful that doesn't happen, then we would obviously inform the board, you know, before we, we, we went too deep into, into, into fund balance.
Okay.
So the only thing is, is I don't, I, at this point, once again, I'll say I'm optimistic that we won't even be into it that much. What I don't want to do though is on the back end, when, when, when we get all the information, we run the numbers, we close the books, and we realize that we went into fund balance $5.1 million and I wouldn't want an audit finding that we violated the board's intent, so to speak.
Well, no, no. But I'm thinking about how the public perceives this. I mean, if, if they just read this statement here, it's like, you know, whatever, whatever we're showing, we'll make it up.
Well, here, I understand that. The dilemma we're in is we've, we've, we have committed to meet this year's obligations regardless. And even if we put a cap on a 5 million, say for instance, we're going into fund balance at $5 million, the reality of it is, is we have to meet those obligations and we've committed to, to the bulk of those obligations or payroll costs. And so the, you know, the harsh reality here is we've committed to make those, those payments and we're going to make them. And so if we put a cap on fund balance, we would have to somehow or another try to find another funding source to try to, to try to align with those, with those expenditures.
Do you have any thoughts on, like you said, it, it lags too much behind? Do you have any thoughts on when we would realize that it was a, a crisis situation? I mean, would it be February or?
Oh, it'd be, no.
March?
No, no, we would know, we would know, I would tell you that we will know within the next couple of months. So we'll, we'll know for absolutely certain by August how much we've went into fund.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, I have a question. So two things. One, this, we have roughly $8 million before we even get to the 3%. Is that correct?
Well, so in March, we actually have 19, we had $19 million in March. That's $4 million more than the 3%. So the 3% is 3% of your operating budget. There are some things that are pulled out from that. It's probably 14 million and something, but we just rounded up to 15 million. So there's $4 million over and above that, that we can use for, I mean, obviously we have to bring it to the board, but that's typically those amounts that we would bring yearly to the board and say, we want to buy textbooks with this money. And so with the $15 million, those, that's in a sense restricted because it's state law. The state will allow local education agencies to spend into that amount because it's, it is, it is for emergency purchases and obviously this qualifies. The dilemma comes in is when you begin to budget for the following year. And so, so there is this requirement that you meet the 3% level and so there is a necessity, if you will, to, to try to replenish those dollars. So what we're really looking at is $19 million where we started and what we're saying is, is, you know, this thing could get down to as much as $7 million. But, but even worst-case scenario, we're looking at potentially $7 million, which means we would be required to replenish 8 million back up to 15 million level. That's where we address that with a, with a combination of, to receive some help this current fiscal year with expenditures from CARES dollars. And then we also budgeted $4 million from next year's budget from recurring revenue to replenish the remainder of that fund balance. So hopefully, though preliminary indications are encouraging that it won't necessarily be at that level.
Ron, one more question. This goes through June 30th. Is that the correct date? It sounds like it might be more like August.
That's strictly, June 30th is, is the, for accounting purposes, those are expenditures incurred by then, not necessarily paid at that rate. So, yeah.
Okay, it's basically this, this.
It's this weird accounting stuff that we do.
Okay, all right. Ms. Bab.
Yeah, and I think probably some of, maybe my stuff will go into what the discussion that Ms. Hill had, but, so I'm going to leave a little bit of my questions. But I loved hearing the report that maybe sales tax is better. I mean, I, I don't know how you're doing your job when literally daily, I think you're getting a different report and projection. But with this craziness that's going on, do you think maybe before each board meeting, even if it's like a written report, we could get a sense of where the sales tax, where we expected it, where we're trending? Just to give us a sense?
Absolutely.
Because I mean, like, I love hearing it's better than we thought and I think that would probably help all of us knowing, I think you get some detail that sometimes maybe in the past we have not worried about, but in this crisis would have, it would be helpful, I think, to know where, where it's coming in compared to the projections of where we thought it was going to be.
Be happy to do that. And, and also, if, if the trend continues, again, I want to be really guarded in, in my optimism, but if the trend continues, this is where it gets back to some of the things Mr. Thomas had, had mentioned at our budget meeting that where we can, we can maybe go back and address some things, you know, that we couldn't do before that we would like to implement, so.
Okay, and let's hold that, let's hold the rest of that conversation for the item that we've been added. Thank you so much. Any other questions specifically regarding fund balance? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, approve payment agreement with Dell Financial Services LLC for purchase of $38,884 Chromebooks plus Chrome Education, paid in three annual payments of $3,504,272.96 beginning on July 1, 2020.
We have a motion by Ms. Hill, a second by Ms. Christie. Discussion, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Ms. Byard. If we could look at the inventory we have in front of us, I'm interested to know why the Dell 3120s could not be used for one-to-one initiatives?
They can be used for one-to-one initiatives. We assumed that the, keep in mind that that is the oldest model that we have in circulation in our schools. So by the time we deploy this one-to-one initiative at the beginning of the school year, they will be less than a year of useful life. So we assumed that the 3120s would become the cushion, if you will. That is, the devices that we might issue to the terminal grade in a school, the devices that would be used for damage, for students that forgot their device at home, for example. So we took those out of the calculation, knowing that we only had one chance to get this order in. Now, there are some adjustments we've made. For example, we understated the enrollment because we left out early graduates. We were using spring numbers and we really understated the enrollment. So some of those things are going to come out in the wash and we have not sat down and allocated the actual number of the new devices to each school. But the 3120 column, and that's the reason it's in blue, that's the older model Chromebook, is the cushion, if you will. Keeping in mind that we have to buy a new device for every K through 2 student because they're getting a different device. So all of those are new. That's the 12,986 number. And then we came up with a budget number of 25,898 based on the information we had at that time to order.
Thank you.
Did I order it?
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have eight yes, one no. Motion carries.
Item 10D, discussion of possible action in regard to additional funding the district may not be getting through the BEP not yet voted on by state lawmakers.
Okay, Mr. McPherson, if you want to come on back up, I know that we have some, some questions. Ms. Hill, would you like to start us off?
I was alarmed, as I know we all were, when we heard about the decrease in funds, understanding that it, in the state's world, it was a supposed to be 2% increase, but understanding that we already meet that threshold, so that was going to be monies we could use for other purposes. And, and then we get this confirmation from you, Mr. McPherson, just about this. And what's really concerning to me is, is your indication, and I believe you are a very credible person, when you say that you had assurance after assurance from the State Department of Education that this in fact would not happen, that the numbers that you were given were, were solid. Could you just maybe start out expanding on that a little?
Yes. So, so let me back up a little bit. So in, in February, the governor came out with his proposal, initial proposal, it's pre-COVID, it was 4% increase, we were working with that number. Then in March, that was adjusted down to the 2%. And, and again, that 2%, 4% is just a component that they run through the salary portion within the BEP formula, it spits out the numbers and so forth. So it was modified again. And that was March. We received our first BEP estimate for April. It was very close to what our projections were. We had done some projections, our, our budget folks had done some projections about what that might look like. We were using that for budget planning. And so in March, we reached out to Department of Ed officials and are these numbers pretty stable? The answer we received was yes. And so we received our May estimate. It was very close to the April estimate, still under the assumption of the 2%. We, you know, we, we reached out to, to ensure our thinking because this was the number we were going to use for budget. And so districts all over the, all over the, the state are using these numbers for their budget. And we were given assurances again that these were good numbers. It would not be affected by COVID. So we went with it. Also knowing that something, maybe something happens, you know, we're hoping, all we can go on is what we've been, you know, what we've been told. And so, lo and behold, last week, we get the, you know, what we feared the most, as the governor had rolled it back. you know, what, what we feared the most, as the governor had rolled it back to no increase. Now, what the Department of Ed has told us is that they will now, and we confirmed, we reached back out and said, you know, it was their understanding, yada, yada, yada. Now we think this is that accurate. And basically, it was, yeah, you're, you're thinking right. So what the, what they have indicated to us is that they will be sending the June estimate to school districts, and it's probably going to be in a couple of weeks. They're going to do two. They're going to do a 2%, and they're going to do one without 2%, because there's the hope, I guess, that the legislation will not approve the proposal. So they're going to give us two. We really don't know what that means for us, other than we do, once again, we went back to the drawing board, you know, ran our numbers through the formulas, nothing official. We looked at it several different ways, and we were getting anything between 2.6 and 2.8 million potentially. If that's the case, there, there is the, the possibility we could be back before the board with a, with a modified budget proposal, where we are having to cut 2.7 or 8, or whatever it is, a million dollars out of the budget. I'll go back, though, to preliminary indications for our April sales tax numbers. Again, these are statewide. We don't know what it means for us. We'll continue to reach out to the state, any information they can give us. I will say this, that in the first, in, in March and April, if you add those two months together, we are around $4 million better than what we thought we would be with those two months. If the trend continues.
We'd be Knox County?
Yes, Knox County. Yes, yes, Knox County. Based on, again, based on our estimates, we, we have the March, we don't have the April yet. But, but, but when we look at, run the numbers, and we look at, we look at what it means for the state as a whole, what does it mean for us? We, we can, we can get fairly precise. If that trend holds up, our hope would be that any reduction, if the legislature approves the BEP reduction, that we could potentially cover that through increased sales tax projections. So if, if, if it holds up, it's very preliminary at this point, because we're, once again, we're, along with all other districts, we're kind of in the unknown. So that obviously would be our first, our biggest hope, where we wouldn't have to go back into the budget, but where we could, we could increase the sales tax projections. So because the thought process is if it, if, if the trend is better in April, or March, and April, and May, and June, that trend will continue unless we have another outbreak, or if another stay-at-home order. And then that would mean that our estimates that were based on previous year, where we thought we could actually up those a little bit. So we're, we're looking at a lot of options. We're having to, to, I don't want to say speculate, it sounds like we're having to guess. We're not guessing, but, but we're having to, to run a lot of calculations on our area and to, to understand what this might mean. So obviously, that would be our, our first option. If we could realistically increase the sales tax projection, we maybe could cover any shortage through that.
Wow. I, I know that we sat here, all of us as a board, and, and struggled with the changes we were already hearing were going to have to occur to cover shortfall we already knew about. And, and I think that, that Bob, you, you all did a remarkable, remarkable job. Talk to me a little bit, if you could, or us a little bit, if you could, about, it sounds like before we even start spending, receive money and start spending for the next fiscal year, that we are going to be paying back our rainy day fund.
Well, it would be, it would be spread throughout the year. So the, the, the hope would be, so we wouldn't have to replenish that all in month one.
Okay.
That's the good thing. We just have to show, I think, you know, a good faith effort, that we have actually acknowledged that there's that potential there, that we could be in violation of the 3%. So we budgeted accordingly, and I think that would suffice with the state. And so the hope would be that sales tax collections would, would be sufficient throughout the year, that would, where we could close an additional 4 million and replenish that. So we won't necessarily be required per se to write a check to it. It would just be, as the collections come in through the year, you would be making your, theoretically, you would be making your, your monthly obligations, and you would have a little bit left over in each month at the end, and you're building it a month, month by month.
So, and I guess this is a question for Mr. Dupler. So what would happen to Knox County schools if we cannot keep that 3%? What are they going to do to us?
Mr. Dupler?
I need to make sure I understand the question. What, what would the state do to the board?
I understand it is a, it is a state law that we must keep 3% of our average fund revenues in this, it's not rainy day, what's it called again?
It.
Fun balance, is that what you call it?
Fun balance.
Fun balance, thank you. Fun balance. That that 3% is, is a required amount. So if we just cannot, and I'm not suggesting this, this certainly would be a last resort, but if we just cannot, and we have to get into that again for this 2.7 or, or whatever, what, what, what is, realistically, what is the state going to do to us? They going to come in and shut, shut our school system down?
Well, yeah. I mean, I'd have to look to see exactly, but what I could imagine would be that, that, that the state would, would probably first start with some type of a notice, and then after that, proceed to maybe perhaps holding back some money eventually the next year, to make sure that, that, that fund is, is replenished. But, but I can also say in that working with state officials in the past, as long as the board and the district is showing good faith and trying to work with its funds the best it can, and maybe dip into that at one point, but then, but then replenish it as quickly as possible, then state officials have been good to work with from that standpoint.
Okay, okay. So do I understand, then, Mr. McPherson, that we are just still in very much a wait-and-see mode?
Unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at. And, and I will say this, I think Mr. Dupler's right in, in, in what he said, that, you know, the potential is that they could just simply withhold BEP monies until you replenish it. But also, keep in mind.
So we don't have the money to start with, and they're going to?
Well, they essentially force you. But here's the thing, we've, we've shown a good faith effort in our budget to address that.
Yeah.
Normally, that's, that's what they're looking for. And, and at year end, if we, let's say we go all the way through the year, and we are under the 3%, right? What would happen is we would go for the next year's budget, and we would once again program amounts in to try to replenish it. So the state really has no problem with districts spending into that money, because it is, it, it is actually four times like these. And you can spend into that 3%. What they don't, what they frown upon is if a district budgets into it. So for instance, if we wanted to do great and wonderful things, and we just said, hey, we know we don't have the recurring revenue, we're going to budget fund balance, and we're just going to budget all of it, even into the 3% to, to do that. That's what they would not allow. So it, it's more on, on a, a district's intent to spend that money on the front end, rather than having to rely on that money for emergencies.
So as of now, we are still doing all, we're doing it all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Just one more thing, and Jennifer, I don't, I mean to put you on the spot, but as our governor, our governors, government liaison, I know that you have had some contact and have still the Friday calls with our lobbyists and all. Can you give us any insight into what, what they're feeling in Nashville right now?
They are feeling the same things we are in, in the other five large districts. They, they really, exactly the same thing. They don't know.
And some conversations that I had had around the same time, where the confirmation was, nope, the 2% is still there, we're good. So I think that even the Department of Ed didn't, was not aware until it was.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think the, the answers we were receiving were, were delivered to us based on the information they had. And I think it was genuine, yes.
I, I do. I, I do, I do think it was genuine. I don't think they were just saying that. I think it was genuine. Ms. Fabb?
Yeah, I just want to, if you could address with the timeline for the county and their budget, because I think it's the end of June that they're voting on theirs, and with our uncertainty, how, I mean, are we going to possibly have to have a special call meeting? I mean, what, what is your sort of thought process on trying to work with the county on their vote?
Chris and I talked about that just a few hours ago. We've been talking about that a lot. I think the only thing we can go on at this point is, the county, you know, again, their issue, they're, they're, they're actually compiling their budget now. The mayor's made his recommendation. I think the only thing we can actually go on is, is what we know now. There hasn't been any action yet taken by the legislature. Even if the legislature had taken action, we, if they were to take, take action today, we don't know what that means for us, and how we would need to modify the budget if so, because we don't have the estimates on what BEP it would be. So I think the only thing we can do is go on what we know. The hope would be, if we get some information where the legislature approves this, and there's a reduction in BEP, I think at that point, we begin to work with the county, and we say, look, this is, this is what we're seeing from the state, preliminary indications. Potentially, is that sales taxes are trending better than we thought. Are you seeing the same thing? We would call state officials, yeah, we're thinking so too. At that point, we would then look at, are there, is there capacity in sales tax projections to raise those and try to cover some of this deficit? So I think it would just be ongoing discussions. Obviously, we would have to act on it pretty quickly, but, but there would, we would have to work very closely with the county, and because they're kind of in the same boat. If we have to modify our budget, then, you know, once again, it's the same.
So just right now, we're sort of thinking, we're just all kind of on hold, and we'll, they'll, they'll approve a budget, and we might have to then make modifications afterwards.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like from, from the trends that you're seeing, that we may, it may not, we may be able to cover it through that revenue growth. And I know you're in constant communication with, with Chris in county finance. So, so if they are, if they're good to kind of go forward and hold, that would be what I would recommend, because it's.
Yes.
I mean, all estimates are that, that it will hopefully be better than we
That's right.
were expecting.
That's right.
So it sounds like patience would be in our favor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to encourage each of us to contact our legislators. This is not done yet, and we've all, we're, most of us are on first-name basis with our delegation. And it's very important that whether they can do it or not, that we don't sit silently and just let, and, and just act like, well, this is okay, because it really isn't.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally agree. I've got myself a note to do that, so definitely. And I, I would remind everyone back to our opening conversation about the task force. Be sure to go online and fill out, thank you, Mr. McPherson. Please go, be sure to go online and fill out the survey so that your beliefs can be documented and part of the process. And thank you so much to all those people who have filled it out. I think it's fantastic that we've already had so much response to that, and that's truly appreciated, and will help inform decisions that need to be made. So, so thank you for, for putting that out there. And I think with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.